Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for June 2nd, 2025. Can I have a motion going to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees, the personal history of a particular tenured employee, matters made confidential under student, matters of a particular student made confidential under federal law, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, and for the advice of legal counsel?
So much.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Thank you. Welcome back to public session.
So much.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for June 2nd, 2025. Quickly stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment as long as for armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Brian Todd, the mother of Tony Coletti, and the sister of Kelly Jenick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its vigor, its justice, its honor, its right, its physical liberty, its justness.
This is always one of my favorite nights. Welcome, everyone. And again, I am so sorry that we're a little late coming out. It's Monday night, should be all that going on in your own lives, and you're here, and I apologize for keeping you waiting. So this is one of my favorite nights of the year. There are, we're in the season of celebration. We're celebrating our students in the schools. We're celebrating tenure at our last May meeting. We're celebrating our retirees and anniversaries, and it's just so wonderful to be able to celebrate the people who from our community make the organization run and help the organization to run. And our district is so fortunate to have such wonderful volunteers. I see a lot of the same faces. For many of you, I've seen your face. I'm in year eight going into year nine. I've seen you each year that I've been here, and our relationship has only grown stronger over the years, and it's just so wonderful to see so many faces. I like to see some new faces also. I'm sure you would too. It would give you the opportunity to step back in your roles. But amidst all the busyness in your schedules, and I get it, everyone's busy. Everyone has demands on their time, yet you prioritize service to your school district and to your community in a way that very few people do. Please know that we see you. I enjoy our PTA meetings once a month where I get to meet with liaisons from all the schools and all the organizations. It's such a special time to sit around that table. I don't know how you feel about those meetings, but I enjoy them. I enjoy being able to spend time with you, hear what's happening a little bit in the buildings, hear what your questions are, hear how invested you are in the success of our district, but most importantly, in the success of our students. Later on today, I'll be giving a presentation which will pause and give you the opportunity to leave if you want to, if you want to head out. But if you want to stay, we're going to be talking about some of the great things that are happening in our school district. It's such a wonderful time in Yorktown, so many wonderful firsts. We received recognitions, two national recognitions in the last month. One is in music. I know the First Niners aren't here, but their contribution to our community is incredible, and I'm so happy that Yorktown was named a national best school, best community for music education in 2025. That is such a wonderful honor for our school district. We don't do that without the great teachers, without committed students, and a supportive parent community. So thank you for making the time. Thank you for helping Yorktown be that special district. We talk about the Yorktown difference. That's one of the things that I impressed upon the staff on our first day back, and we continue to talk about that Yorktown difference. It's different here. I interview candidates, teachers, administrators, custodians, nurses, coaches, and every other area of our organization. The one thing that I hear consistently is it's different here. And yeah, we're part of it, but we have such a great community, and that commitment and that work together that we do just brings that community, our community, to another level. So this evening, we're saying thank you to you. All of the nights that you've spent away from your family in service to our school district, all the days that you either had to alter your work schedule, go in late, have to leave early to get to a PTA event or a district event, we see that. Tonight, we're saying thank you for that. We've had meetings, middle of the day, with the Husker Club to look at fields and bathrooms and concession stands, and you gave up part of your workday because you're invested in this community. And I can go around the room, and Liz, I can talk about all the work that we've done, bring the great programming and great resources, and you've been the catalyst for all of that. And I can look at the Whitsons group and just say, wow, how lucky are we to have you as part of our group, as part of our district. To each parent in the organization, I say thank you. We also are acknowledging our board this evening. We have a tremendous board. There is no board that I would rather work for than the people on the stage. They are so committed to your children, to this community, to this district, and I can't tell you, I say that not just as superintendent here, but I'm a resident here as well. My kids are in the school, just like many of your children are in the school, and I am just honored to have the board that we do. Complete professionals, respectful of their role, respectful of the administration's role. And I, tonight, I say thank you, and there are certificates in front of you. I signed them all. I figure you should have a certificate of appreciation because I and we appreciate everything that you do for our district. Many in our community may see the two-hour meetings that we have twice a month, which you don't see are two-hour policy meetings, and every other week having facilities meetings, and audit meetings, and fiscal meetings, and other planning meetings that we have. There's a lot that goes into being a board member here, and this group does it better than any group that I've ever seen do. So at this time, I'd like to call out each of our school partners for recognition. I think I shared with you in the letter that I sent you that I'm going to ask you to say a brief few words about something that you might be proud of over the course of the school year. Given everything that you've done, and trustee Lisa Rolle mentions this, that many meetings, as we look at the gift brands and donations, it's like, wow, our parent groups are unbelievably supportive. So you have so much to be proud of and so much to share. I'm going to ask you to do it in a limited amount of time because we want to give every group the opportunity to be recognized. And of course, we've got to begin with our big group, which is a district PPSA, and I'd like to invite Lisa Bugle, Ron Fidelli, and any member of their executive board.
You didn't bring a gift to the school partner. We're making you a gift.
So, okay. So I appreciate working relationship that the PTA has with the district. We have a common goal with each other. We meet monthly, as Dr. Hatter mentioned, and share our information and ideas. It's the true collaboration between all the schools and community organizations and the PTA. This year, we continue to support the district initiatives and programs, and look forward to continuing to provide a manner of support. The council would like to give you guys a little treat. So we appreciate you all, and thank you.
I'll reiterate what Lisa says. It's truly a collaborative effort. We truly enjoy the monthly meetings where Dr. Hatter takes time out of his schedule very often. Mrs. Hatterling will be there, Reston will be there for the board of it, representative. And again, this is how we come up with the ideas, some from the district, some will come from the parents, and again, we are able to call a group with one vision, but that's for the children of this district. And that's what I'm so proud of, is that we have that vision together, and we are a different type of district because of that. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere, he's here.
So the next group that we're going to honor is the Yorktown High School PTA. They're standing up here with me already. Dominic, come on up, and Daphne, please, come on up, and any other members of the high school PTA board. So if there's anything specific, I know you spoke, please, about the district PPSA, but if there's anything specific that you'd like to say about the high school, please do.
Our response is set, but you can't. Dominic.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Dr. Hatter. At the high school, it's a little bit more, shall we say, difficult because the role of the PTA is different than a lot of the other schools because we're all a lot, a lot older. But the, our mission is the same, to do whatever we can to support all the, all the students here. And one of the things that we're most proud of this year is helping to facilitate the college admissions panel with the guidance department here at YCS and bring that great resource for the students. And in terms of that role, we're actually, we're actually putting out a survey to the community to figure, to figure out what people want to see from the high school PTA and what else we can do to support the students. And of course, we're looking forward to doing back to the nest again, and I'm looking forward to going back to Mohansick. So a lot of great work going on at the high school PTA. We're very happy to work with all of you.
And just two seconds of a personal moment to share this stage with my son after all these years working in the PTA is just very, very.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'd like to now recognize our Mildred East Strang Middle School PTA. We have some members who are not in attendance, but we have Corinne Felber and Karen Sesney here, and I'd like to invite you to the stage and any other members. So it's in the bag. You're going to be the first to get the 2025-26 calendar magnet. So there should be enough for each member of your executive board. If not, reach out to my office and we'll send you, we'll send you more.
That was a tough act to follow. We don't have presents. And we're not the president. But we're here, and we're very happy to be here. So my name is Karen Sesney, and I am the reporting secretary at MESMS Boarding, Board, standing in for our presidents, Roseanne Brackett and Anisa Mazzuzzi. But we are again thrilled to be here. This is my lovely board member, Carolina June, so I think you all know. And she serves as our treasurer, and as many of you know, she is a very beloved Italian teacher at the middle school. So we just want to say thank you so much to Dr. Hatter and the school board and for this lovely evening. It's a wonderful partnership. We're really thrilled to be here. Thank you to Mrs. Horowitz and her staff for being so amazing and making the middle school experience so wonderful and enjoyable, which is not easy to do considering the age range you're working with. Just the PTA has been an amazing experience. We've been on it for many, many years with our kids, you know, back in the days of Mohansick. And I see Mrs. Barry was in there, it was, you know, a pleasure really to see you guys with Spromer. You guys started it out for us, and it's just been a fantastic experience and an honor to be part of this. It's a really, it's a beautiful district and, you know, just fantastic to be, again, you know, able to collaborate with you guys. And really, the biggest thing, I mean, I'm most proud of, I would say, before I said our, our school, it was international, maybe. That was a really fantastic collaboration. Truly enjoyed with the families and the staff, it just worked out beautifully. But overall, it's just an honor to be part of this and in the decision to work with all of you and to strengthen, you know, to strengthen the connection with the people who are so influential in our children's lives. And that's all of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I told Corinne not to go too far because, come on over, Corinne. I have you as our Crown Pond representative, and Gina, I know you're part of that group as well, so I'd like to welcome you to the stage to spare, share a few thoughts on the Crown Pond PTA.
I'm Gina Spokis. So I apologize, I'm going to be reading a little bit because we want to, this is my second year serving as a president. Last year was co-president with Corinne, and I will also introduce Amanda Richter, who is our corresponding secretary this year. So for the past several years, past two years, I want to thank so many people, so I had to write it down. There's no way I can remember all these names. So I want to thank our, of course, PTA Executive Board, and honestly, the PTA does not work when we don't all work together. And without these two people standing on stage, there wouldn't have been a Crown Pond PTA this year, so I'm so grateful. And the PTA isn't successful without the help of everybody here. The Board of Education, thank you for your support. Of course, Dr. Hatter, right behind me, and Assistant Superintendent, Jean Haverly, thank you for all your support this year as well. It really just doesn't work without the people of our district as well, the volunteers. I call them my mom and our dad tiers. Without them this year, it just wouldn't have been successful, so I'm so grateful. So I don't want to forget some other people, so I apologize. So I also, of course, have to thank our Crown Pond staff and faculty, especially Eileen McKannon, who I don't know how that school would ever run without her, the entire custodial team, and of course, Principal Jacobs, Assistant Principal Sammet, for their support all year long. And thank you to the Yorktown PTA Council, Lisa Bugle, Ron Fidel, we following your footsteps, and the entire board for all that you do to support us during the year. So what are we, what are we most proud of, ladies? I think we wrote down our top 10 events for the kids this year. Our back-to-school celebration is each, I think it's also important to note that for students, especially in fourth and fifth grade, without having these events, it's their social and emotional connection. It's when both of the elementary schools in our district come together. So it's, it's one of those things that the back-to-school event is so crucial because they all get to meet, the two elementary schools come together and meet for the first time, so that's always a big event for us. Frigging at Crown Pond, I think, is a memorable event. It's so much work, honestly, but it is, it pays off when you see these kids' faces and when they dress up. It's, it's so, it's really, it's, it's so rewarding. This year, we had an incredible holiday show. We did a coffee, we called it our hot chocolate, we had a make-your-own-hot-chocolate bar, which was obviously a big hit with the kids, although this year, we forgot the whipped cream, but it still was extremely successful. Right? We had like 30 cans of whipped cream. Yeah. We did something new this year, too. Our new spin, so for the rising fifth graders, excuse me, for the rising, yeah, for the fifth graders at Crown Pond, there is a tradition where they celebrate New Year's Eve every year. This year, we actually put a little spin on it, and we did a winter fun experience, which was really incredible. The kids loved it, and we did it during January instead of the holiday season, so it was our big event. I think it's important to note, sprinkling is always fun, but KJK Live, it's an after-school theater program. I think most of you are aware of what KJK Productions is. This program is so crucial to the fourth and fifth graders at Crown Pond because there isn't many theater program in elementary school. So it's their first experience if they've never been on stage. And my son this year did that program, and I have to say, it's just phenomenal to see them at the beginning of the season not even want to be on stage, and then all of a sudden, you see them transform, and it was really incredible. So I truly hope that it's a tradition at Crown Pond that they keep doing, and I want to thank Dr. Hatter for showing up because the kids were so appreciative for that. It made all the difference in the world. And so I think it's also important to add that, you know, the PTA doesn't, obviously, we don't exist without everybody coming together, and I think it's important as a tradition for next year to remember, it's the we, it's the working together, and to put the students first, all students first, not just your own student. When you go and you walk into a school, it's putting all students first. So thank you, everyone, for your support, and I'm just, I'm really grateful. It's been a, really an honor to serve the past few years, and I'm, I look forward to working within the district, too. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our Brookside PTA has done so much to support the students, staff at Brookside School. At this time, I'd like to invite acting members and members of the executive board of the Brookside PTA to the stage.
So this is my first rodeo, so I kind of have like a little bit of notes all over the place, but I just wanted to thank Mr. Castarini and Dr. Sandor for helping me this year and, you know, guiding me through it all because it was, it was my first time, so I really didn't know what to do. I was kind of thrown into it, but I was kind of glad that I was thrown into it because I learned a lot about myself, and I learned a lot about my wonderful board over here. So this is Jennifer Quinones. She was our reporting secretary, but also our yearbook lady, our yearbook queen. This is our VP, Fran Pyres. She was my right-hand man through all, and we did a lot together this year. We learned a lot about each other. Anna Screech and Cole, she is our corresponding secretary, and she's done so much for us as well. And Shannon Wang is our treasurer, and she was, she had to put up with me through it all as well. But yeah, one thing that I'm most proud of this year is that I feel as if we brought our whole community together with, you know, regarding, you know, volunteering and all the moms coming together and volunteering at every single event and raising money for our school and our field trips. We got to fund over $14,000 for all of our grades. We did a lot of fundraising, and Jen was really good at fundraising, and, you know, I just, we were, just had a great year. So thank you for bringing with me, and thank you guys very much for your support.
I'd like to invite to the stage Jillian McGovern, Rhea Morelli, and members of the executive board of Mohansick.
We were just laughing, we're all teachers, but then we get nervous when we come up here with a microphone and everyone staring at us. I think it would be easier after 20 years, but it's not. My name is Maria Morelli. I'm one of the co-presidents of the Mohansick PTA, along with Jillian McGovern. We have Kristen Young, our corresponding secretary, and Maria O'Connor, our vice president. We just want to say thank you for inviting us tonight. Thank you to our board, to the members who couldn't be here tonight, Carmela Gabriel, Justine Abbey, Daniela Cucharella, and Amy De Rosa. Unfortunately, it's June and sports and our old school events and stuff, so thankfully, thank you guys for making time for tonight. We'd like to first off, thank our admin team, Mrs. Barry and Mrs. Spromer. They're amazing to us. No matter what crazy idea we come up with, they just say yes, and they're there. We're like, hey, we want to do Build a Bear. We need 500 pounds of fluff. Sounds great. Cafeteria will go to no store. They're on board for it. We're going to do a turkey trot in the middle of the winter. They're on board. We want to, you know, do something crazy with just a third grade. No problem. Sounds great. We'll be there. So we really appreciate your support, your flexibility, and most of all, just, you know, your trust and your confidence. Our custodians, Danny, Rob, and Harun are lifesavers. We're constantly texting them, constantly begging them, hey, can you help us? Can we run into the building? Can we do this? Can we do that? Because we all teach during the day, so we're getting there at night, and they are so wonderful. They're always trying to carry stuff for us, do stuff. I mean, they are just the absolute best. We love them. The unsung heroes of the PTA are families. We're all volunteers. They're voluntold. Our husbands, our children, they're the first at every event, they're the last to leave, they're dealing with the phone calls, the policy changes, the emails, the meetings, the Zooms, the nights out, the leaving and bouncing and doing everything. So we just really wanted to thank them and make sure everybody knew, you know, without their support, we really couldn't do this. You know, we work full-time, and this is a whole nother full-time job, and without our family's support, it would be impossible. We ended the year with 440 members, which is a great turnout for Mohansick. According to our treasurer, this is our highest grossing year to date. That money goes directly towards new events and activities, trips, teacher requests, assemblies, and going towards our students' needs, and we're pretty proud of that. We don't really upcharge things, but it's just great with the turnout that we have and the support of the families in our Mohansick community that are attending everything. So we decided, we were just going to talk about our favorite events this year. My absolute favorite is kind of my baby, it's trunk retreat. Been here since I've taken it over. Mrs. Barry's taken that leap of faith the first year, when she's like, you can have 15 cars, and I showed up with 41. And then we've taken it to Wilkins, thanks to the Pratt family, so now we're off-site. We have tractors, hayrides, all sorts of stuff. We had 500 people this year. We had 50 trunks. It's an amazing event. We had things at the high school. We had, the drama department came, they were wonderful, they were pirates. It was just a great sense of community and a great day. We also had our dances. Kristen Young and Daniela Cucharella are dance queens. They make everything happen. They make the most beautiful displays, beautiful everything. We had great themes. We had the decades dance for our second and third graders. So we got to go back and dress like we did at a middle school canteen back in like the 90s, and we felt so cool, and our kids and the adults, everyone embraced the themes. Our younger kids had "Under the Sea," and it was just really, really nice to see everyone dressed up. And then lastly, we started something new this year. We did a senior standoff. When our current third graders, my oldest son's grade came in, they were still in masks. So there was all the mandates. They really didn't have an event. We didn't get to the school until the end of the year party. I remember Ron letting me in to go bring back a pan, and I was like, I get to go in the building. This is amazing. So we really wanted to kind of throw it back to them and give them something special, and thanks to Mrs. Barry's support, we had that. We had a club event ready for the holidays where, thanks to Jillian, all of our third graders were able to go. They rotated through events. They had a night out, their first ever drop-off event. We had our dance at Brookside, thanks to Kathy. And then we ended with our partnership with Summer Trails. They had a night drop-off event at Summer Trails where they got to do everything. So it was really, really special.
For the first, can you hear me? I never know if the microphone is good. Okay. So for the first time this year, we did a turkey trot, so having two PTA teachers leading the PTA, of course, we wanted to make sure that the kids have a chance to be physically fit with their families, so we were able to host that in November. And for staff appreciation this week, we were able to provide the teachers with five days of events. We had the pop and pancake part come. We had salsa press and cater. We had the philharmonic bouquet and a bunch of things like that to show them our appreciation. We also did Build a Bear, so as part of one school, one book. We had the kids, like Maria had mentioned, they got to come and build a book buddy where they got to stuff their own teddy bears, and I know my kids sleep with them every night, and it was a really, really cute, special event. We're proud of all that we've done and the memories that we are making for our children, and we hope that one day they'll look back with pride of how hard all of us have And we hope that one day they'll look back with pride of how hard all of us have worked for them. So thank you to Dr. Hatter and the board and we hope everybody has a wonderful rest of the school year.
Our SEPTA group, our Special Education PTA, is such an important group that spans district-wide. And there seems to be one person who continuously steps up when needed to keep the organization going, to keep the good things happening within SEPTA going. And Jessica Bynes, that's you, and I just want to thank you first of all for stepping up, volunteering again and again and again. And I'd like to invite you to the stage with members of your executive board.
So I'm Jessica Bynes, AKA Gavin's mom, which started Gina at KJK in Crommont. And I became Gavin's mom. So it's a great program, so I happen to agree with you. But I would like to start off by expressing my gratitude to Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Amerling, and the entire Board of Education. A special thank you goes to Caroline and her staff. Without Kat's efforts, SEPTA would not be here today. She kept it running last year and so this year. Lisa's help in assembling the board for this year and candidates for next year was greatly appreciated. Daphne and the two Jackies and Rosanna, their presence was truly invaluable. Finally, the other PTAs, thank you for your support in helping us keep this going. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Daphne, our incoming president.
Thank you Jess, Catherine, and our current board, Jacqueline Opefi and Jacqueline Borina, who couldn't be here tonight, for coming together in just the past three months, breathing life back into SEPTA, giving it an active status. Even following a nine-month hiatus, SEPTA was fortunate to be able to provide three grants totaling $2,000 for both in-district and out-of-district students. We also provided an end-of-year pizza party for the pioneer team and a dessert tray for their dinner dance. We are looking forward to having the presence back in each of the schools and supporting the families that need our help. Thank you.
I don't believe we have representatives from the First Nighters here. We certainly honor them and thank them for their contributions to all of our arts programs. I don't believe we have representatives from the Science Research Foundation here or the Foundation for Excellence as well. But we certainly appreciate all of their efforts from the science research standpoint and their contributions to our extraordinary science research program. We have a couple of other clubs here, organizations that I'd like to make sure that we honor this evening. And we'll move to the Husker Club, which has been so instrumental in supporting the athletics and they've been so instrumental in so many things that you see and that you don't see. So I'm going to invite Anthony Pacello, Frank Bielley, and the members of their executive board to come to the stage.
So thank you very much. First off, I wanted to say that we come here and everybody says thanks to us. But more importantly, I think it's for us to say thank you to the people that help us get to where we need to go as an organization. And that really starts off with Rob and his team, the coaches, Dawn, most importantly, in dealing with us and communicating with us. But more than that is always having Dr. Hatter at the events where we can see him at the football field, we can see him at the baseball field. He's everywhere and supporting us in everything that we do. And most importantly, the inclusion that you bring and allow us to be participants in what's going on around the projects on the fields and the upgrades that are going on. When you say that this place is different and it's special, it truly is. It's one of the main reasons why as a lot of us that are here are alumni of this school. Actually, the majority of the board is alumni of this school. And we came back purposely to raise our families here because of what this school brings to and what this community brings to the table. So thank you to all of you for making that community happen. So as we go through, we have Frank Bielley, who's the co-president, who'll be taking over next year for us. Marla Tornabi, and Jen Judge, and Frank Salar. Several other members couldn't join us tonight because of sports and all the other things that go along with life these days. But the last bit about what we're really proud of and what we're excited about is we're no longer just a football booster club. We are a sports club that is inclusive of all the sports. We want to be able to deliver a message of support for every team and allow that team to have opportunities to buy specific and do specific sports activities and things that they need to enhance their program. But more importantly, we're proud of what we call our, you know, kind of our event of events, which is our Senior Dinner, where we offer large amounts of scholarships. I can't remember the actual amounts. Missy was here, she would tell me exactly. But it's a decent amount of scholarships to our athletes and it's a great event for the parents to come and celebrate every athlete that participates. I believe Rob said once, what is it, 78% of our students participate in an athletic event? Seven, which is probably higher than many, many other school districts. And that has a lot to do with the community and the events and we really appreciate that. Couple of other events, you see the beautification, the signage that's up, the tennis courts to the flags to more that's coming. So we continue the branding efforts so that we can make this campus feel more and more like a college campus around not just athletics, but all of the branding associated to our campus. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention is as we go forward, I think we've just passed the expense to get a real Husker or born Husker mascot. So we'll be delivering a real born Husker mascot that we hopefully will see not only at sporting events, but we'll see them at other events, including maybe even here one day. But that's, to me, something going forward and bringing it towards what we want to do as far as bringing the campus to a higher level and enhancing everybody's experience and making it fun. Other than that, thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Hatter.
We have two more extraordinary groups, school partners, that we're going to honor this evening. And I'd like to begin by honoring the Alliance for Safe Kids. Liz Talbert with ASK has been such a tremendous partner in this work. So Liz, I'd like to invite you.
Hi, everyone. The mission of the Alliance for Safe Kids, also known as ASK, is to connect the community to resources that support youth mental health, substance misuse prevention, treatment and recovery, and opportunities for thoughtful service. And this is achieved in a variety of ways and most recently with our virtual Save a Life Wellness Fair, which we're very excited about. This free tool allows the community to connect vital resources by either visiting the website or downloading the app on their phone. So I would encourage all of you, please visit the ASK website, receive some more information about it, and download that app on your phone because you never know when you, a friend, a family member, a neighbor, may need to be connected to important resources. So ASK relies heavily on our partnerships with all sectors of the community to strengthen the safety net that protects our youth and families. One of the longest and strongest partnerships is with the Yorktown Central School District and I'm so appreciative of that. I'm grateful to be invited into the schools to share information with students and families, to be included in the district PTSA as a community organization, to assist with facilitating presentations, collaborating with your student assistant services counselor, and working with some amazing students from ME, SMS, NYHS as the adult advisor to the Yorktown Youth Council. And I'm looking at one of our founding members right in front of me, Dominic Fidelli, who is amazing with Youth Council. So I'd like to thank you very much for this recognition and for recognizing all of the volunteers in the room tonight. Thank you.
And last but not least, it's the group that keeps us fed throughout the course of the day, which I would argue is one of the most important tasks around the district. They prepare thousands of meals each day. And truth of the matter is, when the Aramark contract came to a close last year, I think a lot of us were a little nervous. I was too. But in reality, what kept me grounded is that it's not about, and I said this to food service director Jerry, you should tell you. I said, Jerry, I don't care what shirt you're wearing, as long as it's you wearing the shirt because it's about people, not programs. It's about people and not necessarily what organization you're working for. And we have a great food service director. Jerry is one of the best people, not just professionals, but best people that I've worked with. The relationship that we have is incredible, she's always so supportive. I quite often do superintendent for a day or activities where students come to visit my office. And inevitably, the conversation, when I ask them if they were superintendent for the day, what would they change? Inevitably, for a second grader or a first grade student, it has something to do with a menu item. And I say, you know what, come over to my desk, sit in my chair, we're gonna call this extension. And so we call over to Jerry and Jerry is always so wonderful on the other end, greeting the student as Mr. Superintendent or Ms. Superintendent and is always receptive with a can-do attitude. And it's so much more than keeping the students nourished. Their voices are heard when we interact with Jerry. They feel valued, seen, appreciated, and that their perspective, regardless of their age, matters. That's Jerry. And Jerry, I'd like to invite you to the team up to the stage.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. We are so proud to be partnered with such a wonderful school district. My 22 years here speaks volumes. It has truly been an honor to be part of a district that values excellence, dedication, and teamwork. We are incredibly fortunate to have such an amazing staff and to work alongside the finest administrators and board members. Dr. Hatter, we are especially grateful for your exceptional leadership and unwavering support for our food service program. Your commitment makes a lasting difference and we deeply appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
I don't think I forgot anyone. I hope I did not. What a special night. Before I turn it over to members of the board to make any comments that they would like to make, I just want to acknowledge some people who are here. I see Trish Harris in the back. Trish does such a great job of interfacing with all of the PTAs and the groups for facility requests. So Trish, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge you. Thank you. Our building administrators are here, there are just way too many administrators here to mention by name, but I see so many of you here, whether you're a district administrator from central office or a school building administrator. Thank you for everything that you do in partnership because I think it was Maria who mentioned that it's kind of a two-way street here, it's a two-way relationship. And I heard it more than once. But thank you for everything that you're doing from the building and district level administrative standpoint. It's a great, great group, everyone here. You're just so terrific and valued and appreciated. And I hope you feel terrific, valued, and appreciated because we all value and appreciate you. From my colleagues in the buildings, to my colleagues in central office, to members of the board. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our district. And it's important to our board to set aside one of their meetings during one of the busiest times of the year to pause and say thank you to you for giving your time throughout the course of the year. And to our board, I thank you for your dedication to the children of Yorktown. And at this point, I'll turn it over to you if you want to make some final comments.
Well, I think a lot has been said, but I'm gonna head on down to Mike to see if there's anything he'd like to add.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and following you all during the course of the year. As Ron stated, every organization contributes so much in so many different ways. It's an enormous amount of time and energy expended on behalf of our children, which is what we're all looking for. So thank you all for that.
I think I speak on behalf of probably all the board. We've all done what all of you do, so I think we have a great appreciation for all the time and efforts we put in. Lisa Rolle and I started when our kids, when our oldest children were five years old and we've been together ever since in every PTA, from starting at Mohansik to the high school. So we really know what time and commitment you put forward as well as the time that your family has to put either without you or with you when you're here, you know, bringing in boxes or helping at different nights. The only other thing I would add is it's nice to hear that some of the programs that we were a part of when we were working at and are still around. It's also equally as nice to hear that you brought new programs. That's very refreshing and really relevant to what's, you know, what's interesting today for all of our students. So, and that's the harder part, is actually building a new program. So we appreciate you. We know how much time you put in and we really, we couldn't do what we do and have such a phenomenal district without what all of you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations to all of you. I've had the honor, the privilege of working with so many of you and it's been a pleasure. I was very happy to see the gamut of programs, all the funding, the trunk and treat in the elementary school buildings, and of course, all the college counseling sessions that you brought on the high school. So thank you for supporting our children. So thank you for supporting our children and thank you for everything you do.
Lisa?
So I'll just echo everything that's been said. I mean, when Fright Night was brought up, I almost had flashbacks as well as fond memories, because Fright Night is quite an ordeal to get through, but thank you for keeping that alive, because it was one of my favorite events, as well as my kids. You know, Dr. Hatter did say that I do mention, when we do our gifts, friends, and donations, that every time a PTA comes through, every time, there's something from the PTA, and that's a tribute to all of you. So thank you so much for everything you do for us.
Pete?
Thank you, all of you, for all the time and effort you put in, and I know there's a lot of 10-year, like summer, first year, second year, 15 years. The ones that are early on in their volunteerism don't realize that it is an 18-year commitment and beyond. So again, thank you, the impact you have. Give yourselves a pat on the back, because it's really, really important, and it makes us the district that we really are because of you guys. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, and like Pete said, it is an 18-year commitment. I look at somebody like Ron Fidelli, who has been here in every capacity, sometimes in two or three capacities in a year, because he would never let the district down. So, and there's many of you like him, he's just the one I'm picking out because I can see him, but there's a lot of you. Jessica does the same thing, and it's just, we're just so appreciative that you have never let a building down, any of you PTA members. So we're grateful to all of you, we're grateful to the Huskers, to all the other organizations. LISH organization is great. So we just thank everybody for all of their hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. So, okay, we'll take a brief five-minute recess. We're going to give you the opportunity to exit if you choose. We've got our construction manager here, one of our energy performance. I'm going to be giving a year-end update, but if you'd like to leave now, you certainly may. We'll take a brief five-minute recess. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Where do we have to go? Public comment?
Number one, yep.
All right. Yvette, did anybody sign up for public comment?
No.
So we're going to move on to your reports, Ron.
Okay. So we're going to begin the superintendent's report with a presentation on energy efficiency and sustainability, and to deliver that presentation, we've invited Paul Tazi of ARRIS Construction, and ARRIS serves as the district's construction manager, longstanding construction manager, and we asked Paul to put together a presentation to just help us continue the conversation and advance the conversation that we've been having with regard to energy efficiency, cost-saving measures, sustainability as a whole. And so at this point, and specifically, we've been talking about energy performance contracts. Is that really a viable pathway forward for our school district or not? So we've invited Paul here. Paul can provide some information and certainly give the board the opportunity to ask any questions that they have or that we have. Paul, I'll turn it over to you. There is a slide advancer on the podium, or if you say next slide, Yvette's happy to advance a slide for you as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate being here to talk to you about this. This is set up as a discussion, not necessarily set up to promote anything individually. It's just a discussion about energy performance contracts, what they are, and how to basically get into them, and the alternatives. I'm your construction manager, so I handle, right now, we're working on the Bond project that passed, so we're engaged in that. Like Dr. Hatter said, we've been discussing, we've been having facilities meetings by week since the beginning, since the Bond passed, and at most of the facilities meeting, a discussion arises in facility, in energy performance contracts, benefits, pluses, minuses, that whole thing. So really, what we want to do is just move it forward from there, so that we can get a direction on which avenue you feel most comfortable in. So in that, we are going to, the agenda basically that I put together is energy performance contracts, what, why, and how, district objectives, and potential energy conservation methods, renewable energy systems, energy performance contracts, downsides, district options and alternatives, and then next steps with the discussion. So the first item, for those that aren't sure what an energy performance contract is, so this is a paragraph directly out of the Energy, New York State Energy, or ONGA line. So an energy performance contract is an agreement between the school district and an energy service company or ESCO for the provision of energy services in which energy systems are installed, maintained and managed to improve the energy efficiency of or produce energy for a facility in exchange for a portion of the energy savings or revenue. So really, we're looking at putting together, how do we save energy in the school and make that self-funding is the intent of the energy performance contracts. So, on why you should consider, or why to consider an EPC, an energy performance contract, you're looking to assist the district in becoming as energy efficient as possible through the installation of energy conservation methods and upgrades, reduces the burden on taxpayers, allows the district to save money annually, and are self-funded. The project's scope must be funded out of the energy savings that the upgrades will yield over time. It improves the school and classroom and structural environment. A large part of that is ventilation and lighting, and it does not require a voter approval. But districts will qualify it for an additional 10% building aid if it's part of a referendum, and EPCs are not subject to competitive bidding. So in there, a lot of districts get involved in energy performance contracts because it doesn't need voter approval. So they can put a program together, they discuss it in an opponent session such as this, but the board actually is the one with the vote on. In our discussions at the facilities meeting, the, if we go, if you decide to go with an energy performance contract, the 10% building aid is the incentive that was chosen that they'd like to go for. So how does an energy, how does an energy performance contract work? It starts out with, the district's required to obtain a comprehensive energy audit to identify the improvements that will save energy of the district's facilities. So it's a team that goes through and goes in and out of every room and every system that you have, discussing with your maintenance department, your facilities director, to understand the entire building and what systems are aging that could be replaced or upgraded, and go through and do a visual of all the lighting in the district to basically understand what lighting can be upgraded to actually save you money. So with using the results of the energy, the district determines which improvements to incorporate. So really, you see a long, laundry list of items that can be incorporated, and that's when everybody needs to sit around and say, "Okay, let's pick these and not those." Some have longer payback, others are paid within a shorter period of time. So that this, and then moving forward on after you've chosen what you're trying to go after. The district either selects an ESCO. An ESCO is an energy service company. You can either pick your own, or you can put out an RFP, a request for proposal, for multiple ESCOs to respond to the EPC. So they will give their interpretation of what they want to save, or we direct them to basically give us pricing on a specific scope. The ESCO responds to the RFP with an energy consumption savings or the cost savings over life of the EPC. The ESCO may guarantee that the improvements will generate cost savings sufficient to pay for the project over the term of the EPC, which is a maximum of 18 years. However, the savings are not required for a successful project. So you have to have the savings pay for the ECMs, the methods, but you can add items into it, so it's not a, it's not based on just savings. So what are the objectives of an EPC? And the objectives really are to replace or upgrade aging systems. The example is lighting systems. Now LED lighting is used throughout, and it's also in the building codes. So any new portion of the buildings that we're working on, LED lighting will be incorporated. Control systems, which help manage your heating and air conditioning system, you have them, but sometimes it's, we need to look at them to see if they need an upgrade to it. Ventilation equipment, it's very important to make sure that all your ventilation equipment is operating to and replace equipment that is starting to age out. And the look at electric, we look into electric motors to make sure that they are energy-efficient motors. So the, another objective would be to improve the occupancy, the occupant comfort and learning environment. Studies have shown that when you add air circulation, better air circulation, air changes into a building, and increase the lighting, if there's a benefit to the students. So, and then another objective would be to increase sustainability and reduce the carbon of the district's carbon footprint. That's a goal generally for all districts and everybody, I mean, that's a pretty important goal to basically look at at the same time. Lower operating costs by implementation of energy conservation methods. That's a great, you know, anytime you work that into your house and you start realizing these savings, you know, it becomes beneficial. So then, you look at, okay, what systems, what energy, any energy conservation methods should you be looking into? So some of the ones here, and there's a large list that the state recognizes, but some of the ones that I've just pulled out was to replace the interior exterior lighting to LED. Install automatic lighting controls, replace aging HVAC equipment with more efficient equipment, upgrade HVAC building management systems, building envelope improvements to reduce air infiltration, replace aging roofs, install renewable energy systems, solar arrays, replace domestic water heaters to more efficient ones, and install pipe and tank installation where missing. There's a number of methods that can be gone through. These are the ones that we see through most of the districts that we work in that are the main methods that we better address. So in there, I also talked about, and one of the ones is renewable energy systems. And you, there's a lot of discussion on the cost and the benefit of renewable energy systems, the solar PV arrays. To analyze the cost savings on this, and everything has to break down into a 15-year payback over an 18-year term. So what has to happen is to understand the cost of solar systems, installing panels in your district. We have to review the panel mounting locations. Are you looking at mounting panels on a roof, doing mounting panels on the roof mounted, a parking lot canopy, or a ground-mounted system? The roof-mounted system, everybody's seen those, is the panels on top of your roof, a canopy, they're doing a lot of these now, building canopies over top of parking lots. And a ground-mounted system, if you have a lot of property, which you don't really for panels, well, you put a stanchion there and put panels on that. So for the roof-mounted system, we need to do a complete structural analysis of the existing roof systems and review the remaining useful life and warranty panels of the existing roof systems. Yes, the problem with that, everybody has to analyze at the same time. You look at the roofs and say, "That's a great place to put a lot of panels on." But in this district, I haven't analyzed every building, but I know we put a lot of these roofs on for the last 15 years. So in the last 10, 15 years that you've been doing roofing, do you want to put a 20-year product on top of a roof that you're going to replace in 10 years? So that's what we have to consider, is the useful life expectancy of the roofing you have, to understand whether or not panels will work on that building without having to take them off when you're going to replace the roof. You'd like the panel system and your roofies to age out at the same time. So looking at that, one of the buildings that you really do need a roof on would be French Hill, so that would, my recommendation would, if you want to go down that road, that would be one of the first buildings that I would look at. For ground-mounted or canopy systems, you need a geotechnical survey with Boring's structural engineer to develop the stanchions and the supports, the canopy system or the ground-mounted system and design that. And the reason why I bring all this up, every one of these items has a cost to it, and we've got to factor in all the costs associated with building these systems, so that we can understand the savings that are going to be built in based on what type of system. Obviously, the roof-mounted systems are the most economical, the canopy systems are the most expensive. And then we have to form a ground penetrating radar to understand what's under the ground on the pathways that would be, the subgrade pathways for wire. So what we would do after we get, put all this information together, or whoever does it, everybody has to go through the same procedures, provides an estimated cost of the installed systems and the useful life of the PV, you know, systems and the panel systems. So you want to, like I said before, you want to balance the life of the system with the life of the roof or the area you're going to be putting it in. So we analyze the costs associated with the anticipated degradation of the lifetime of the panel efficiency and factor that into the overall cost. The panels right now are basically a 20-year product, and they degrade over time, so that there is a factor that you would build into the cost and understand your energy savings over the course of time is going to lessen every year as you get closer to the end of its life. So we would basically factor that at the same time, and then we have to identify what my cert of rebates are available. Now, one of the things, and on my cert of rebates, and we move with that, one of the things that I looked into that I was talking to Dr. Hatter about, is that we've worked with other districts on the Clean Green School Initiative, and helped get them a considerable amount of money, but we can't do it here. We're not, Yorktown is not an eligible district in the state to take advantage of those programs. So we had to abandon that and start looking at other ways to make this, to make a project work for you. So one of the things, and this is not a sales pitch, I'm not basically pushing EPCs, what I'm doing is trying to give you information based on EPCs and what other alternatives are there, so you can make an informed decision on what pathway you want to go with. So I, in doing that, I have to run some downsides of the energy performance contracts. So, so in doing that, energy performance contracts generally have a higher cost of energy conservation methods installed. The reason for that is the ESCOs, which are doing the majority of work both in the calculations and installations, work on a sizable markup, generally a little higher than what's in the standard bidding industry. There are complex contracts, EPCs can be complicated to negotiate and understand. They require special knowledge to ensure favorable terms and avoid unfavorable commitments. So your attorneys are well-skilled in that, and that basically goes back to the attorneys on making sure that your interests are protected. Performance risks. If the energy savings proposed do not materialize as expected, the school district might not realize the anticipated financial benefits from the guaranteed savings offered. Now, every ESCO that you go to basically says, "We're going to guarantee the savings," and they do, and they have a measurement and verification process that they go to to guarantee that savings and show that you're getting it. But in all the years that we've been doing or have been associated with energy performance contracts, I've never once seen a district be able to take advantage of the, not the savings, they take advantage of savings, but if it doesn't generate not the savings, they take advantage of savings, but if it doesn't generate the savings, I've never seen anybody be able to collect on it. So it's, it's there, but it's there as a, to basically entice you. It's very difficult after you start a performance contract and you build it, to get down to exactly what the savings is, because every day you have an additional load going into the systems. You plug in more computers, you, you know, more electric items are introduced. So the more electric you introduce, the less efficient the building becomes, and you start using the energy. If you didn't put the energy performance contract together or energy methods, your bill would just increase in my terms in this way. You also have limited control, the district may have limited oversight over certain aspects of the energy systems or ECMs once contracted, which can lead to concerns about quality and responsiveness. When you're, when you're going with an energy performance contract, you're really not picking the light fixture or the motor or the system that you want. The ESCO is picking that based on where their best price is. So, you know, what you're doing is, yes, you will get LED lighting, and one of the things I've indicated is design limitations. Most energy service companies, ESCOs, look to form lighting retrofits in lieu of the replacement fixtures. Two things, one is lighting retrofits are not aidable, so you don't collect your state aid on most. What a lighting retrofit is, especially in your district, we have new lighting that is in there between 15 and 20 years ago. So that's when we put the lighting. They're fluorescent lighting, three bulb systems. We, the retrofits, they remove the lamps, they remove the ballast, and they install LED bulbs, lamps, replacement lamps. They're not as efficient, and that's why the SED will not aid them. They're not as efficient and they won't last the time, generally run about five years in those lamps, and then you're replacing them again. So what, what do you do? There's good things about an EPC and there's bad things about an EPC. So basically, if you, the energy performance contracts can be a great way to introduce more energy savings in the districts, but you could do the same thing without having to go down the road of an energy performance contract. Similar to, like right now, we're, we're doing the bond work, and every building that we're going to be in, every addition we build or every renovation we put in, will have everything that you would normally build into an energy performance contract built into the work already. So you could do the same thing on your own, by on your own, meaning putting together a package to basically create the savings and do the, you know, the calculations to see where it falls. So one of, there's really three methods to go. One is the EPC that I talked about, but you can also save energy money without participating in the formal EPC program by focusing on simple low-cost energy saving methods. Some of these options could be through changing behaviors, culture, more active management of the buildings and equipment along with strategic planning. So really what you're, what you're doing is trying to change the culture of the rooms that don't have occupancy sensors, turn off the lights. And I know you do some of that, but it would be just promoting it a little further. And then developing a district-wide energy conservation program that increases sustainability and lowers the district's carbon footprint on an annual basis and fund it as a budget line up. These are alternatives to just going into a full energy performance contract. So really what you're doing is you're developing a full energy conservation program with the yearly cost savings data. And then, well, this is another option, and presented to the community, as a neutral cost referendum. So you could either go through an EPC, which is an energy performance contract, build the same work into a project, and then put it out for a public referendum, or do it as you want to build it and, you know, a program over the course of time and build it into a, a yearly program. So you decide I want to spend X number of dollars on energy, on energy conservation methods and build it like that. So really what it is, there's multiple ways to go about this, and I wanted to offer you a couple of alternatives so that you have things to look at. So that was a real quick presentation, it runs through our nickels, were EPCs. So now I'd really like to open it up to discussion.
Paul, can I ask just a question? If, if we went to that alternative approach, which is to save money and energy without participating in a formal energy performance contract, the, the first step to that process, would there be maybe having someone come in to audit energy, to look at, okay, well, these rooms, you'd be able to save money and be more efficient with LED lights, or, or would there, what would the next step be?
Actually, no matter which program you pick, it starts out with the same process. And then you have to do an energy audit throughout the district to identify what systems will save you energy and be able to fund it. The ESCOs want to do the same thing, they have to do the same thing. See, with an ESCO, there's a couple of different ways of working with an ESCO. One of the ways is there are companies out there, and we've discussed a couple of different ones, that will set up the process for you. And their fees aren't paid, you don't have to pay them directly for the fees, what happens, it's built into the overall cost. So their fees are built into the cost, and they still have to turn the project around for a cost savings. And then they will basically put it out to multiple ESCOs for pricing and for their information. But the, the ESCOs will help produce the, mostly the energy audit in the building. But yes, no matter which way you go, you have to identify where you're going to be saving, what, what methods you're going to save.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to open it up to ask you, Pete has any questions?
So, I'm, I forgot how long friends, because we've done it with our company, where we'd have a company come in and basically replace all the lighting, right, and for a proportion of our, our utility savings. And so far, it's actually worked out, but we have guaranteed contracts that say they're going to, X, Y, and Z, and it didn't cost us anything out of pocket or anything. They replaced all the lighting, they, throughout our whole facility. So with these contracts, can we get guarantees of savings that would translate into no money out of pocket and a cost savings over, it seems like a 15-year payback is, actually ours is over 10. So 15 years seems like a really long time.
Well, 15 years is based on state aid, that's what they will, I don't care about it for, so the ready is based on 15 years. But are, when you say that there's no out-of-pocket cost, you're correct. What happens is they're replacing the lighting and you're getting, paying for that service through the energy savings, that's what pays for that. Now, remember that you're paying them also a 25 to 30% markup on top of everything. So you can do that on your own and not pay that 30%, or you can move forward with the, an ESCO, you know, not an ESCO, an EPC is a good way to go for simplicity. And generally, if the district has no other option on which way to go, and they don't want to go out for another proposition, you'll find that most districts just put it out and they don't go after the 10% aid. And that was also discussed in facilities, I mean, and, you know, Lisa did bring up that, you know, it wouldn't be wise to give up the additional aid.
But, but there's also the outlay of money also to, if you're going to do it on your own.
Sure, you know, and that's why I started out with you, you have to take the all-hanging fruit, which is the lighting. The lighting gives you the biggest payback. So you would take lighting and you would basically, through the calculations of how much the savings would be, you could start basically planning your system year by year on how much you're going to do to basically make it sustainable.
Okay. Lisa?
Okay. You said it was short, you made it seem like it was simple, it's a lot, but do any of our neighboring districts have any of these kinds of contracts?
Sure, almost all.
So we're behind eight ball, really?
Well, not behind the eight ball, it's, it's, you know, some of the things, a lot of districts are putting solar, and we've worked in a lot of, that are putting roof panels on, because that's the best way to approach it. But they're also just replacing their roofs. So when you're putting roof panels on top of a brand-new roof, you get the advantage of, again, timing the two systems so that they age out about the same time. We're doing that in Tarrytown right now. And the ESCO that's working on that, we were able to negotiate a, on one part of the building, a roof replacement built into the project to put the panels, so the panels have a roof, new roof to go on top of. But then what happens is, what you're doing is you're not generating the same savings because you've got to pay for the roof now. So what happens is, it's a way to get that work done, the savings from the energy, the energy you will save or generate from the panels will help pay for those panels and the roof over 15-year life expectancy, you know, 15-year time period.
What happens to the panels at the end of the life expectancy?
You take them off and you replace them.
But where do they go?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I.
Are they plastic, right? They go to a landfill?
I, I really don't know.
I don't know, is that energy sufficient?
Thank you.
So I know you mentioned you're working in Tarrytown, are there other districts nearby or municipalities where you worked with, you know, some more, you know, bigger initiatives, maybe around an academy or something else?
Austin put in a, a canopy, a Brookside School. We're, we, as construction managers, what we generally do is oversee what they're doing to make sure that there's no outlay of the projects that we're working on, because we've got to balance that at the same time. But, you know, what I'll do is work with the districts on helping them plan for the canopies and those type of items. But yes, they, I don't stay with the EPC through the whole thing generally. Generally, after it gets started, we'll back out of that, because that wouldn't be part of our service that we do with. But yes, Austin has done the canopy. There are two canopies proposed in Tarrytown right now. Most of the other districts that we've worked in have put roof panels on, so the roof systems are the most, the most popular. Hudson, which we worked in a few years ago, did a, almost a solar farm on a, but they have quite a bit of land on the rear of the school that they use for a solar farm. So we've been involved in other systems that are there. So there are some, they bring this, Austin is one of the ones that I would lead you to that has, they do energy performance contracts on a regular basis.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a question about our utility companies. Years ago, I performed some of these energy audits for a local utility company, it was complimentary for our commercial client base. I was just wondering, have we contacted our utilities and do they provide any level of support that would possibly be, you know, complimentary for us and help us out in that way?
I haven't at this time, but I can, yes. I don't, I don't know if they have provided any support. Usually I go to NYSR, NYSR to see what the state is offering for that. Again, under the, that's why I went to the green, the clean green program, because they have a program on their Track One program, it'll pay for the audits and all the engineering upfront costs.
Thank you. Mike?
I don't really have any questions, Chad, you have it involved in this discussion ongoing as part of the facilities committee, I think when we get to the next steps, I'm happy to add some more, but I don't have any questions.
All right. So I, I do have a few, because you know I always do. In solar, in the area, in the districts that you've helped install solar, has there ever been a cost savings to the district having the solar panels in place? I mean, people keep telling us that, you know, you're going to be rolling back the meters, is that a reality?
What you're actually doing with the solar panels for the first 15 years is the savings that you're generating is going to pay for the panels. So the, the savings you get, remember that with an EPC is not, you're taking out a loan, you're, you're basically financing the full balance of that and paying for it through the energy savings, that's how that, that process works. So to pay all that loan, your energy savings is being that loan. So in effect, it'll take you about 15, 15 years, a little more if it's a canopy system to pay the panel system.
And at the same time, then, that canopy system you said is, is 15-year lifespan, so now you've got to start all over again?
Well, the panel is not the canopy. So if you, you know, the canopy is a, it, it looks like a steel structure, it is a steel structure. So that, that would, you know, you've got a 60-year canopy structure of which you put panels on, on top. And the panels are.
Every, every 15 years.
Generally, they're about 20 years is what is expected. The technology for panels is getting better every year, and with better technology, they'll increase the life expectancy of the panels.
Okay. And then, we've done, with, under your guidance, we've done a tremendous amount of work in this district, including, you know, installing a lot of LEDs in different areas and stuff like that. So if someone comes in looking to do an EPC, they're only looking at a district, I would assume, where they can actually make money, because it's for them to make money. So how much does the amount of work we've already done in our district help or hurt us?
Well, it, it, it actually helps you a lot because every lamp that you change to LED saves you money. So, but it, it, doesn't hurt you for getting ESCOs to be interested. It's hard to say because it really depends on, you know, without going through again, the 15 and 20-year-old lighting that's in this district is a method that they would look at. Again, lighting is the low-hanging fruit, let's say. That's where you get your best savings and your quickest payback. Lighting paybacks generally occur in about five years. So that's where you're, you know, that, that's where I say that if you're going to do it outside of an ESCO, you would build it around lighting and start changing lighting and lighting controls.
Right, because you'd be paying an ESCO for 15 years, but you would have forgotten all your savings in the first five.
Yeah, the, the idea behind the ESCOs and the, and the programs that's up, that are developed, are not necessarily looking at lighting exclusively. You, you might want lighting, but you need to replace a number of univentilators. So in replacing the univentilators, you can sort of build that into the project, even though a new univentilator is not going to save you any, any energy, there's no savings associated with that. Same thing with the roofing, the savings is minimal. If you try to complete a roof with the savings, it would take you somewhere around 30 years, probably 30 to 40 years on that. So what you do is you, a lot of districts pull together other items that they need to replace and try to build it into the savings, and when you spread it over a 15-year period, yes, it becomes, you know, affordable.
So one last question, and then we'll go to the next steps. So if our roofs are between 10 and 15 years old, and they have a 20-year life expectancy, and we decide we're going to replace them so that we can put solar on, how does SED look at that for aidability?
They will aid anything over 15, you know, over 15 years, anything under 15 years, you'll have a penalty for. So any product over, you know, so if it's only a 10-year roof, they will delete, you know, they will only aid it for two-thirds of the value.
So that's, that's a consideration as well, then?
It is, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
I, I think, you know, one of the important parts is, is that, you know, we're, we're, a lot of discussions are going around which way you should go, and no matter which way we go, you still need an energy audit to start the process. So understanding where your energy savings is going to be in your district goes a long way to help you decide which program you want to work with.
So that is really the next step?
I believe that would be the best next step.
Of course.
So, so what we, how are we going to align the, the offset in the lifespan to the roof and the solar panels on it? How, like how are we going to catch up?
Well, the example I use is French Hill. French Hill needs a roof right now. So when you put French Hill on, then I would look at, if you're interested in roof-mounted solar systems, I would look at putting a solar system on French Hill at that time. That would be the best, and then you have a. And then you have a 25-year roof and a system that's going to go 20 years. And hopefully, these, you know, the panel technology will help increase that.
I got it. So, so I think what you're saying is wait, wait for the next roof that needs replacement and then.
No, I'm not a proponent of any of the, I'm informational.
All won't sell you anything.
A lot of the companies and, and we, you know, and one of the projects we're working on, which happens in Tarrytown. And we were working on that one, and the ESCO that's doing that one basically came back and said, look, no problem, we'll take the panels off the roof and put them back on when you redo the roof. And I said, no, 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 no. Once the panels go on the roof, they're staying there for the life of the panel. Yeah, they might do that, they're not doing that for free. They're going to build that into the cost of the panels, so you'll receive less. So, you know, it, it's really, you start analyzing each building individually, each area, to see what is in your, what's the advantage for, to put panels on.
Could I ask one last question, and I want to go to the next step, because I. In all of the districts that you've worked in that have done these energy performance contracts or ESCOs, has anybody ever received the savings that they said they were going to receive?
I, I can't actually answer that because it would take, the ESCOs are required to give you a maintenance and verification report every year. So they're basically indicating whether or not all the systems that they installed are generating the savings that are, that they have predicted. But unless you have an internal energy management person to verify that their maintenance verification report is actually correct, how do you know if they actually did that?
Okay, let's go on to next steps. So you're, you're saying our next step should be to have an energy audit performed?
Yes, I think, I think the next steps would be an energy audit. You go, you know, again, go through all the buildings to make sure you understand the life of the systems. And, you know, Dennis is going to be a real valuable asset because he's been here a long time and understands where the systems are and what is necessary. So you do a full energy audit of the building, and then you develop that list. And then you sit down and say, okay, where are the savings? Because once you generate the savings, if I take a, and I'll, I'll give you an example. If I take a 15-year-old light fixer, I understand what the energy usage of that light fixer is going to be on kilowatt hours. So then I understand the same thing for an LED fixer. So then it's just an equation to get to what is the savings, turn that into dollars and, you know, then you start looking and saying, okay, this is going to generate X number of dollars and start planning the dollar system around that.
But you're saying it's deeper than that because we're looking at univentilators and everything?
Well, univentilators are not something that you're going to, again, like a univentilator, you're doing that so you, you can either lighten up your maintenance budget or get a lot of work done that is going to be difficult to pay for any other way. But again, buying a univentilator and installing that at a $15,000 to $20,000 cost, that cost is directly onto the cost of the project without a savings associated with it. So if you're true energy savings, you go just for the items that are energy saving, that are going to save energy. A lot of districts and most districts combine both.
Mike, I'm going to go back down to you for next steps.
Well, I, I mean, certainly the key next step is an energy audit. That'll give us the overview of the projects that we should be considering and then we can figure out how we want to approach funding them, whether it's through a performance contract or with a, you know, some sort of in-house setup. On top of that, though, I, I would ask Paul, if, if we know that we have to repair the roof at French Hill already, irrespective of an energy audit, should we not investigate solar as a means of funding the, the roof replacement at French Hill? And can we, you know, do those two things simultaneously and not wait for the energy audit to be done? We already know that needs, that work needs to be done. So is that, is that a possibility, something we can look at?
It is, and we could look at that. On, on French Hill, the only downside of French Hill, even though that one I was mentioning because of the life expectancy of the roof, is that your aid is based on, really, your oxygen boat of children using it as a school. So they're not going to provide you aid for a building that you're not using as a school.
But that's not going to change anytime soon, so.
Right, but, but so without that.
We have pre-K programming, yeah, that helps.
That would help, yes. But yes, we, it would be something that would be possible to look into and see before that roof is replaced, just what, what would it cost to put panels on there? And will the panels on there help subsidize the cost of their roof?
All right, thank you. Anybody else? So I guess it's during tomorrow, we'll talk about how to engage in an energy auditor.
Yes.
And, and I guess, can you also give us information about how we would go about looking about a solar company that would help us replace the roof at French Hill?
The, yeah, there are two different companies that do that work, obviously. One who do the roofing deal and does the solar. And all the same solar companies that are out there providing panels in the commercial market are the same ones that are working for school districts. The, the companies, and the same thing with the roofing. The companies that put together these programs for you do exactly what I'm talking about, is they go out and bid this work out to a number of subcontractors, and then they build the job. So the, the ESCOs really aren't performing any work. They're really just managing the work, so.
But then, if they're managing the work, then you don't manage the work?
I don't need to manage work, no, you don't, you know, basically, that's your choice. I do not. I usually, on ESCOs and going into energy performance contracts, yeah, I help set it up, but that's it. I, I, and I do that as, just because I work for the districts.
But, but then that means the district loses some of the controls that we've built in all of these years with having a specific construction manager, because now you have one you don't necessarily choose.
That would be correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Ron? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks Paul for the.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask you here, is that from the Google slides? Please. Okay. So our next and final presentation of the evening is a 2024-25 year in review presentation. It's really just as a recap and a summary of some of the things that took place, how we made progress on our goals, our area of focus, and, and just some updates that I thought are important for the board and for the community to be aware of. I always begin with our district's vision statement, and, and we continue to keep an eye forward with, with these four bullets. Certainly, I won't read them to you. You've seen them over and over again, but that certainly leads the way for us. With regard to enrollment, we're 3,455 students. Has a Bets Day this school year, which is in October of, of 2024. So October being school year has the Bets Day enrollment data. These are the enrollments in our schools slightly up from what we forecast for this school year. Up by almost 30 students from what we forecast. On the next slide, we have the enrollment by grade level. We have 120 students enrolled in our pre-K program, and that is not included in the previous slide. The previous slide, that's our K-12 enrollment, not our pre-K-12 enrollment. So pre-K-12 enrollment is highlighted here. Next year, our pre-K enrollment looks to be closer to 150, 160, and, and growing each day. Here's a look at the 2024-25 board areas of focus. And what I did was, I want, I looked back at last year's presentation. In July, we made a presentation on the areas of focus. And I looked back at some of the things that we discussed at that meeting. So this slide on the screen for, obviously, our board members of our community to see spells out seven different areas we were going to specifically address in pursuit of those areas of focus. And I wanted to give you an update, now almost one calendar year later, on, on some promises that we made 10 months ago. Where are we, how do we do with regard to our goal? So for the first bullet, to assess if courses are aligned to student interest, there was so much work that was done. There were surveys that were conducted, not just of students, but of staff as well, to determine internal capacity. Surveys of students, certainly at the middle school level. I believe there were surveys of the high school upcoming. And from this, our middle school students, and through the Superintendent Student Council, have identified two courses that interest them with, with regard to electives, personal finance and sports analytics, which are two really exciting concepts for our middle school students. So we're looking to not begin those in the 25-26 school year, but rather use that as a planning year and implement in the following. The Superintendent Student Council was such an overwhelming success. That was a vision that we had 10 months ago. It's come to fruition, and it has been so incredibly successful. Our middle school students worked on two big projects this year, balancing temperatures across classrooms and adding elective courses, while our high schoolers worked on limiting the number of tests, tests that they can have on any one given day during certain points of the year, and paving the commuter lot, which has been something that I've worked on for many years, but it took the work of the High School Superintendent Student Council to actually achieve that. A repository of lessons for ESEAM that has been successful, thanks to Mr. Miller for compiling, working with teachers, and working with Ms. Burns to compile a repository. I included the sample kindergarten repository, which the board can certainly click on. We'll have that for each elementary grade, and that's exciting to be able to offer. I won't open that repository now, just in the interest of time, but it, it is available for your review. That work has happened, that work continues, it's a living, breathing repository. We've worked with ASK to bring more community wellness presentations. We had five presentations, there are four bullets, but that last bullet, the gentleman in the last bullet presented twice virtually. So lots of community engagement, lots of great work happening. The third bullet, Dr. Nicholas Ramarko, was through a collaboration with the PPS department, and they did such a wonderful job in bringing Dr. Ramarko in, and ASK did a great job with bringing Dr. Dewey in. So so many contributors to this program. The last three are there for, because they're, they're obvious with, in many ways. The Yorktown Minute, you just need to tune into our social media channels to see the posting. The biggest criticism that I get of the Yorktown Minute is it's generally not a minute. It's generally two or three or, well, not four minutes, but generally it's longer than a minute. But I do want to share, and I'll come back to this, the Yorktown Minute is now a nationally recognized program. And we were just honored, and my thanks to Brian for all of his work. Brian comes in every Monday morning with a tripod and his iPhone, and he films me in front of my desk. There's not a big production team, it's just Brian with a camera and a tripod that we use. And it's now a nationally recognized program, which we'll talk more about. The modified zero-based budget, I didn't include a separate slide. We had a presentation after presentation that reflected the modified zero-based budgeting approach, which is why I think we were so successful in putting forth a budget that was so fiscally sound and gets us everything that we need. My thanks to Lisa and her team for doing that so seamlessly. It was a lot of work, but it was done, they made it look easy. And certainly building our work with cultural awareness and equities, and things that we've done in terms of blackout dates on calendars, looking at our calendars and trying to be strategic so that families don't have to make those hard choices about observing religious holidays and services or attending various school events. So that's just one very demonstrable and tangible outside of some of the trainings that our administrators received with the American Jewish Committee and, and the like. So it has been just a great year in so many regards. And it, it's rewarding to see the seven areas that we laid out, we actually made some meaningful progress in. I don't enjoy presenting test scores, but, and the reason I don't enjoy doing that is we focus so much on the whole child. And the whole child is so much more than reducing to a number and looking at just one simple quantitative metric to determine success. I determine success by so many different pieces. There's always that slide in our budget presentations that talks about the whole child, looking at not just the academics, but the social emotional work, athletics, the arts, and so many other areas that we support. But if we want to do look at the academics, if we want to actually dig into the numbers, the numbers look really good. I included five years' worth of data. These are percentile ranks. I didn't want to look at pass rates because there are different pass rates that are set in different years. Some tests are better than others in any given year. There are rubrics that are changed. There are, so opt-outs that we're intending with. But I looked at a percentile rank that compares us to other school districts in the state because all of the other school districts in the state are also dealing with a poorly designed test, a rubric that is difficult to interpret, cut scores that are set at an arbitrary level, opt-outs. So in comparison to districts across our state, I'll give you an example. In ELA, prior to COVID 2019, we outperformed with regard to proficiency, 89.1% of districts in the state. In 2024, we outperformed 95.6% of districts. So I purposely included pre-COVID-level data so that we can draw comparisons over recent years. And if we, there is no data for 2020 because the assessments were suspended that year, just as a point of clarification. But if we look at the assessments, if we really drill down to the assessment prior to COVID, the assessment immediately following COVID, and the most recent assessment, we'll see that things are trending in the right direction for our school districts. So much has been made about the learning gaps and the learning loss that has occurred. I just wanted to share with our community just this one metric with regard to how our school district compares to districts across the state. And I think it's a favorable comparison. And certainly favorable for ourselves, we've increased our percentile rank over year, over the years. The same story plays out in mathematics. These are the five most recent assessment data points that we have. We don't have, obviously, the data points from the 2025 assessments. And again, trending in the right direction. If we drill down to the pre-COVID, immediately following COVID, and then most recent assessment results, things are trending in the right direction again. As we look at Regents exam proficiency data, again, a percentile rank. This is probably the most challenging calculation to come up with because the Regents exams have undergone changes over the last five years. Different exams have undergone changes. But we've all faced changes as a state, so it's not unique to Yorktown. So we use a percentile ranks, and again, favorable, by and large, favorable. As I look at AP exam data, again, the pre-COVID numbers, you'll see exams, over 600 exams were administered post-COVID. It's more about 450, most recently 471 exams were administered. But when we look at the far right column, the percentage of exam scores at a three or greater, we'll see that in 2024, we get 89%, which is higher than any of the years prior on this chart. So again, things are trending in the right direction. I don't have a explanation for you as to why the number of exams have gone down in a post-COVID environment than pre-COVID. I looked into it, but I, I just don't have a explanation that I can stand behind tonight. So I continue to look into that reason. Just three data points that I wish to share with you. At AP Statistics, the percentage of students scoring a five, which is the highest score that you can get on an AP exam, we were ranked first in New York State on that data point. AP Calculus AV, again, first in Westchester County. BC Calculus, students scoring a five or better, first in the state. Additional recognitions, and I'm not going to read the slide with you. These are just recent recognitions. This is not going back to September. We'd be here until Tuesday morning, talking about recognitions throughout the course of the year. I won't read them, but just some wonderful, wonderful things are happening. Many firsts in our district. We had a student who arguably won the Best Science Research Prize in the world, Best Science, at ISAP, the International Science and Engineering Fair. We can't remember that ever happening in our school district. Our Aeronautics team is going back to defend their national championship. That's exciting. That's exciting. Great things are happening. Two National Merit Scholarship winners. In spring, for the first time in our district's history, we were named the best community for music education. That is so exciting for our school district. We have received recognitions in every genre, National Blue Ribbon, Best High Schools, America's Best High Schools, Best Districts to Work. This is so special because it recognizes all of the great work happening in our music education classrooms across the district. In athletics, again, great things are happening. I won't go through all of the records and all of the accolades, but they're listed here as are the Spring Athlete Recognition signings. In the fall, we have Division One and Division Two National Signing Day. But again, I told you, these are recent recognitions, so this is a Division Three Commitment Day of the spring. These are the commitments that we have at the Division Three and there's one, I believe, Division Two Commitment Year, too. So lots of great things happening and what I want to acknowledge also, and finally, this is the last slide that I'll share, are two national honors that we received for School of Communications. And we brought Brian on a couple of years back, a few years back, and Brian has done such an extraordinary job in the publication and digital media excellence category. Our Yorktown Minute won a merit award and the newsletter, which Brian single-handedly created, won an honorable mention award. And that is just a terrific journey for us because we've come a long way in our communications, our presence on social media, our marketing of our school district and the great things that are happening here. And I have a tremendous amount of respect and gratitude for what Brian has done in terms of sharing the good work that's happening. This has been happening all along, but we have not done historically a great job of publicizing it to the community and Brian has really taken that work to the next level. So my thanks to Brian. I would thank the team, but Brian is the team. Brian's a one-person operation. So my thanks to Brian for everything that he's doing in that regard. Again, just a quick update. I wanted to give you some information, great things happening, but we can always get better and we want to continue to improve. There's always more work for us to do and that's the beauty of our field is that as well as our students have performed, as well as our district has performed, there's always so much work ahead of us and we need to aspire to aim higher and go farther and do more. And we'll continue to do that. And I also think it's a good spring word for what areas of focus do we want to look at for the upcoming school year, which I know the board is going to engage in discussions on that. Before we do that, I have some updates, but if there are any questions that the board has, I'm happy to take them at this time and then I can give the updates.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, did you have any questions? Tom?
No questions. I mean, tremendous amount of work being done in so many different areas, which is exactly what this board has been focused on for so many years. You and your team have delivered great results and thank you.
Cheryl?
I just want to say congratulations on the honors that we received for our communication efforts. This was something that we had brought up years ago as far as something we really wanted to work on and become more, you know, public in our information and all of our successes. And you made it happen and Brian, you really made it happen and very quickly. So thank you so much and to be recognized for it is even greater. So thank you so much for following through on all that.
Rashawn?
Yeah, what a great year and thank you, Brian and team.
Can you, Brian? Please.
Thank you for putting all that data together. I love data and the way you put it together. It really helps understand where we've been and where we're going. There's been so much talk over the past several years about the harm that shutting down the schools caused and I agree that it did and it looks like, you know, with your guidance, we're coming out of it. So thank you. And then thank you to Brian for telling the community all about us and everything that's been going on here. We really do have such a great team with our administration and our staff and our community partners. And Brian, thanks to you, you know, like Cheryl said, we've been talking about that for a long time, our lack of communication and you really spirited that and took it way beyond what we could ever imagine. So thank you.
No, just thank Rashawn. Thank you for sharing. The data is data-driven too, so it's really, really great to see. And it's so wonderful to see the great things that have gone on this year. So it's a testament to you and your team.
I appreciate updating us on the areas of focus because, you know, we give them to you and it's nice to know. Although we do know all through the year, it's nice to have it all compiled in one place. I tell Brian all the time, I thank him all the time because someone who's been here for so long, I know what we started with. Remember Pete? PR. And you don't even have to ask Brian. He is so creative and he's always thinking and forward-thinking and trying to come up with different ways to expose our district and all the wonderful things that are going on. So thank you. Great news. I'm glad we were recognized for your hard work. We're ready.
So just a few updates, which is the final bullet point of the Superintendent's Report. And again, I'll be brief on these. So first of all, thank you to our community. This is our first budget meeting after the budget vote and so I just want to say thank you for the overwhelming support, about a 75% approval rate and we take your confidence so seriously and your trust so seriously and we work every day to make sure that we continue to make our district better. So thank you to our community for that vote of confidence and for overwhelmingly supporting the school budget. Also with regard to the cell phone ban, which is another topic of conversation that has come up, I've been discussing this with members of the community, with the Superintendent Student Council. The high school students have really taken an interest in this and I was interested in hearing their perspectives. They had some valuable insights that I found really important that I'll share with our policy committee as we begin to frame policy language around this law. 259 members of our community have responded to our survey thus far. Interestingly, our community is quite split with regard to their feelings on the ban, with about 53% or so at this point in support of the ban, either strongly supporting or somewhat supporting, with about 47% or so opposing. So it's quite split down the middle and more to come on that from a policy standpoint, but we'll certainly take this data once the survey closes on the fourth and share that back with the policy committee so that they can take the data under consideration as we craft language. Also, the Ex officio board member will report back at the June 16 Board of Education meeting, but I wanted you to know that we followed the process that we discussed. We engaged our Superintendent Student Council. They were so impressive in the interviews. They came to a great choice and we'll be sharing that with the policy committee again as we look at language around the ex officio board member. And we hope to have a final recommendation to the full board at the June 16 meeting in advance of when the mandate is to take effect on July 1st. And one follow-up item with regard to bus stop warrant cameras, you'll notice on the agenda, there is an agreement to opt into the county program. We've reached an agreement with the bus company. We've reached an agreement with the county where we will be able to opt into the bus stop warrant cameras. It's in the interest of safety for our students and for everyone in our community, frankly. But we also, we'll start small. We'll try on a few buses first because we'll have two separate systems operating and that's important for our community to understand that because we're opting into the county program, it does not discount the cameras that are on the inside of the bus that the district has sole and full control over. What we're opting into, what I'm asking for the board to opt into this evening is for the stopwarrants only and that's a county program. It will be enforced by the Westchester County Police Department and that again is for the external cameras, which are on the bus stop warrants. And so I'm excited to report that we came to an agreement there and we'll be moving forward hopefully with your approval. That is everything that I wanted to share with you. If there are any questions on anything that I did share, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, that concludes the report that I wanted to share.
Any questions?
I have a question. I just, I understand that we're surveying regarding the cell phone ban, but correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a choice in implementing this, correct? You're absolutely right. We have to implement the cell phone ban irrespective of one's feelings and position on this. We have to implement. Where we have some discretion over are some of the, how we store the storage solutions, but no, your bigger point is well taken and 100% correct. We don't have say over the law itself, which is a law and it prohibits bell-to-bell use, but there are certain circumstances under which a child can access their cell phone, but for us it will be specifically at the high school level and that's where the policy language will come in and certainly the policy committee this week.
A quick question about stop warrant cameras. So it's a county-run program, so if somebody gets a ticket, we have nothing to do with ticketing people, we have nothing to do with collecting on tickets, we don't get the money for it. Is that a correct thing?
That's right. We're not a ticketing agency, so we don't issue the tickets. We don't, we're not part of the court system. We don't collect revenue from this. We're doing this purely from a safety standpoint for our students. There is no monetary gain to be had for our school district.
Okay, I just want to, so somebody gets a ticket, they don't call you?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to have the board discussion items, so we're going to move right into the areas of focus. And the reason I asked to put this on the agenda was we have to start the discussion and last year when we started it, we did two things. One, we decided we were going to roll over the same areas of focus and then just put in some sub-areas and concerns or questions to move forward. I don't know whether we want to roll over the same areas of focus. I figure I'd give everybody a heads up to think about it so that maybe we can discuss it at the next meeting. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or concerns or questions about the areas of focus and what we want to do to move forward. Go ahead, Rashawn. Bill?
No, do you want to talk about it now or at the next meeting?
We can talk about it now. We can start the discussion now and we can follow through. I thought it was going to take more than one meeting to get through this.
Sure. So I think a lot of what we had last year still applies. I don't know if there's a way to combine maybe two of them and I would like to see sustainability on here and it doesn't have to be in the form of, you know, like instruction, right? There's a lot we can do with, you know, reducing food waste and other things that don't require huge amounts of capital. But I think I'd like to see sustainability in here for next year. That's my thoughts.
Would you, would you think about combining student connectedness and student wellness? Because they kind of go together, don't they?
Sure.
And then we could, because I don't know if we want to add a seventh category, but maybe combining two.
Combining two and yeah, key to six.
What do you guys think about, anybody have any thoughts?
Well, I know what we were looking at, you know, with student connectedness last year, eSteam 3.0, you know, all of those things, but I don't know what it means for next year, right? So for student connectedness, we've got our board member, which I feel like we talked about that long before it became a requirement and they just caught up to us. So what's, yes, I am in favor of student connectedness. What's the next step in that? And I think rather than just throwing topics on a paper that sound good, what are we, what are we putting behind it? Like what, where do you see eSteam going next year, Ron? I mean, that's, that's really what this is about, the fiscal responsibility. Yes, that's, that's our obligation. What does that mean? So I'd like to see some substance behind it. I think that's just work by us that we need to do.
Well, do you want to, is some of it, do you want to see where Ron sees it going and then we can add to it?
For sure.
So we're going to throw it back in your face?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We're all good with that? Cheryl?
Yeah, I think we need to put maybe some targets down and flesh out some of these topics. And, you know, I think that's the way we really make some growth or show growth or make some movement as long as we have some goals, some sub-goals or targets to work toward. I think that's how we move with that way. So I think that's great. I think if Ron starts off and then we can fill in the gaps. There are.
I think the goal would be to have the areas of focus set by like the July 1st meeting so that he has the summer to plan it if we think we can get through in the next two meetings? Okay. All right?
I'll have something to do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Board action items. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12th or the May 20th meeting?
So.
Second.
All those in favor? High opposed. Motion to approve the treasures report for April 2025? All those in favor? High opposed. Motion to approve the Flames Art Report for April 2025? Lisa, amazing work. No exceptions. First time. All those in favor? High opposed. Motion to approve the extra classroom report for April 2025? All those in favor? High opposed. Policy adoption, a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. 2245, ex officio student board member. 2410, policy and regulation development, adoption and implementation review. 2710, communications among individual board members. 4321.1, provisions of special education services in a least restrictive environment. 4321.10, programs and services parentally, for parentally placed non-public school students with disabilities. And 4452, individual help tutoring.
Second.
All those in favor?
Quick discussion on that.
Absolutely.
I know, I think at the last meeting when we did a first read on 4321.10, you had a comment or a question about, you know, it looks very similar mathematically to 4321.1. So we decided we're going to approve the policy tonight. We will discuss the numbering at our next policy meeting. It is part of a sequence, one through 10. One through 14. So, but we'll bring it to the policy committee and see what we want to do. But I just wanted to give you a heads up. I didn't want you to think your comment went to negative.
Well, but one through 10 could be 01 and then 10?
I think that's the answer. Let's make it point 01, 02 and then we get to 10 and then you can understand.
Yeah. But we will, we can, you know, I don't want to say fix it, but we'll have the discussion and then.
I could just see an Excel sheet cutting it off.
All right. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Personnel. Be resolved that employee number 6162 be placed unpaid administrative leave effective May 16, 2021. Employee 6162 has certified teaching assistant tenure area in the district.
Second.
All those in favor? High opposed. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion of the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, other compensation, education, extended school year, additions to substitute list, corrections, resignations. Under classified personnel, we have extended school year, additions to the substitute list, removal of the substitute list and resignations.
So moved.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm just going to appease myself because my daughter's a woman.
And then you have to say her name because she wants her name.
Oh, she does want to say it.
Juliana Roll. Okay. All those in favor? High opposed. There, you got it in. Thank you. Under business, a motion to approve the proposal for ARIS contracting for the construction management services for the rooftop HVAC equipment replacement project in the amount of $28,000. All those in favor? High opposed. A motion to approve the attached resolution to authorize the RIC-1 ROC Risk Operations Center to negotiate data privacy agreements on behalf of the district for the 25, 26 school year.
So moved.
All those in favor? High opposed. Motion to approve the following vendor agreements for the 25, 26 school year. They are listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor? High opposed. A motion to approve the attached PPS independent contracts for the 25, 26 school year pending receipt of the required insurance documents. They are all listed below. All those in favor? High opposed. A motion to approve the music and arts agreements for the 25, 26 instrument repairs pending receipt of insurance documents?
So moved.
All those in favor? High opposed. Motion to extend the contract with Rydell for athletic equipment supplies, apparel and/or reconditioning services effective July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026.
So moved.
All those in favor? High opposed. A motion to approve amendment 25 to 26 in the vendor agreement as per the May 19, 2023 RFP with Manpower Group Inc. for campus reader and monitor services.
So moved.
All those in favor? High opposed. Resolved on a recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the agreement with Egitech LTD to provide onsite information IT services with pricing through TIPS contract number 230504 for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. number 230504 for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, pending proof of required insurance documents. A copy of this contract shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the board president to renew the contract with Granite Tech Solutions to provide disaster recovery services for Envision the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, at a cost of $20,058 annually, pending receipt of insurance documents.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the following contracts with CommSource pending receipt of required insurance documents. They're listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the 2526 agreements for the videography services as followed. They are listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the schools, the Board of Education authorizes the execution of the 2526 initial contract for Putnam Northern Westchester OC Services.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the schools, the Board of Education authorizes the assistant superintendent for business to execute the 2526 initial contract for the lower RIC OC Services through D.C.S.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the budget transfer listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A resolution authorizing agreement to participate in the Westchester County School Plus Armed Star Safety Program is listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to accept the audit report made by the internal auditors and the district's corrective action plan for the intensive review of human resources for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Discussion. This was a really clean audit, Rashme. It looks like our HR is doing their job.
Absolutely. And I do, you know, want to thank Dr. McGinnis and also Lisa Centilico, who worked very closely on not just on the report, but drafting the corrective action plan. So it was a great year on the audit side. We miss you, Pete.
It's great. We appreciate that. Thanks to the HR department for their hard work. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Special ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of June 2, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Disgrants and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following disgrants and donations. Mohanser, $500 for the second grade Bear Mountain excursion from the Mohanser PTA at Brookside. $19 for the third grade Wolf Conservation excursion from Brookside PTA. $751.93 for the first grade excursion to Stepping Stones from the Brookside PTA. $2,931 for the third grade excursion to the Bronx Zoo from the Brookside PTA. At the middle school, $86 for the eighth grade excursion to extreme play from the middle school PTA. At the high school, $440 from Project Leadway Mini Grant from the Rochester Institute of Technology. $1,000 for the high school mini grant from the Chestnut Petroleum Pump for a Cause. $500 from the Westchester Office of New York Community Trust for the David Rubenfeld Memorial Fund. $500 from the Joseph Duranco for the Joseph Scaglio Memorial Scholarship Fund, and $1,000 from an honored donor, the Jason Foley Memorial Scholarship.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Again, Lisa, my PTAs are amazing.
Yes.
All right. We are up. Public comment number two? Nobody? We're in the wrong direction. And board comments. Peter?
Sean, would you?
I'm going to start with you first.
No, just another great evening. It's so wonderful to see all the volunteers.[1636.33]